You're watching WSTV Digital Media.
Good evening. I called to order this June 3 meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and asked the city secretary to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bessie.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Kothen Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Thank you. And as we go into our normal time of moment of silence, we'd just ask everyone to keep in mind our colleagues and our brothers and sisters in city government up in Virginia Beach and keep them in our thoughts and prayers tonight. But please join the city council meeting in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. And tonight, as we do the pledge of allegiance, we have Boy Scout Troop 749 with us from Ardmore Methodist Church. So scouts, if you'd like to lead us in the pledge from right there where you're at, as we please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, scouts. We're glad to have you with us tonight. Our sergeant-at-arms tonight is Lieutenant Todd Hart. And Lieutenant, we're glad to have you with us as well. And I guess in terms of that Virginia Beach terrible situation, city manager indicates that we'll be coming to the Public Safety Committee, I believe, next month for preliminary report on a kind of a looking at our security in this building as well as other city facilities there. So we will go through the city's agenda, which is comprised of the following items. We have three rezoning petitions. There's an item regarding a special use permit, two items regarding site plan amendments, as well as an item regarding awarding a contract. Rezoning petitions, the special use permit, and the site plan amendments are listed as public hearings. When these hearings are called, persons in the council chamber will give an opportunity to speak. If there is opposition to the zoning petitions, the proponents and the opponents will be given 15 minutes for presentation, as well as three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing and the city council will consider the item. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Of course, copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings are always available to the public at our website, and just click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. Councilmembers, without objection, Councilmember Burke has two items that she wishes to continue. So without objection, we'll go to items Z3 and Z4 first.
Thank you.
Please read those. Ms. Kenny.
Item Z3, public hearing on zoning petition of Gateway Management Services from RS9 to RMS5, property located on the east side of Drumerton Road, north of Haynes Mill Road, located in the northeast ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I move to continue item Z3, including the public hearing, to the city council's August 5, 2019 meeting.
Second. Motion, and second, to continue in discussion. If not, all those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous, to be continued. And now, item Z4.
Item Z4, public hearing on special use permit application of Gateway Management Services. Property is located on the east side of Drumerton Road, north of Haynes Mill Road, located in the northeast ward.
Councilmember Burke.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I move to continue item Z4, including the public hearing, to the city council's August 5, 2019 meeting.
Second.
Motion, and second, in discussion. Not all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Burke. So we go back now to item Z1.
Item Z1, public hearing on zoning petition of Michael Neal Properties LLC and Bob Neal Incorporated of Winston-Salem, from RS9 and HBL to GBL. Property is located on the southeast corner of Haynes Mall Boulevard and Charleau Lane, located in the southwest ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? I know the petitioner is here, if there are any questions. Seeing no opposition, I declare the public hearing closed. And I recognize Councilwoman Bessie.
Thank you. If we could just have a very brief report from staff, just to let the public know what's involved.
Sure. So the subject property you see on the screen before you hear is outlined in yellow. This is on the south side of Haynes Mall Boulevard. This is one of the last sections of residential zoning on Haynes Mall Boulevard. It's surrounded by commercial zoning. So the Walmart is to the south in this image. CarMax would be on the north side of Haynes Mall Boulevard. Area Plan, Southwest Suburban Area Plan recommends commercial for this site. Couple images, this is on Haynes Mall Boulevard. The subject property would be to the left. This is on Kestner Mill Road. Subject property would be to the right. Again, Area Plan does recommend commercial for this site. It's surrounded by commercial zoning, and this would allow for the development of subject property, basically consistent with what you see in this area along Haynes Mall Boulevard. It went to Planning Board at their May 23 meeting. There was no opposition present, and the board recommended unanimously approval of this request.
Thank you. There's been no opposition voiced to me. It appears to be an appropriate rezoning. Basically, this is between Haynes Mall Boulevard and Walmart. So it's suitable for commercial development, less so for residential, certainly. So I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W-3410.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that motion's passed unanimously. Thank you, Councilmember Bessie. Item Z2.
Item Z2, public hearing on zoning petition of Village at Robin Hood LLC, from MUS to GBS. Property is located on the northwest corner of Fleetwood Circle and Adenook Road, located in the west ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone in council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Again, the petitioner is here, if there are any questions. Seeing no opposition, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Recognize, Councilman Clark.
We have a two-minute.
Absolutely. So the location map you see in front of you, the subject property outlined in yellow, this is on, this is at the Village of Robin Hood. This is on the north side of Robin Hood Road, kind of at the terminus of Metalard. And you can see the existing shopping center and multifamily that's been built out in that mixed-use zoning in the past. This is, if you're familiar with the area, the Harris Heater Shopping Center is the anchor in the area of the multifamilies further west. The part we're talking about is really the remainder along the eastern edge, whereas it borders the residential zoning in that area. This is the area plan for the subject property. It does recommend commercial zoning for this site. Couple images, this is out on the site, looking into the subject property. It is kind of the graded area here in the background. This is from a similar vantage point. This is looking back west into the shopping center itself. And this is along the edge of Fleetwood Circle and Adenook Road. You're looking towards the residential area. The subject property's in the background, and then the shopping center itself is back further west. This is the original site plan that was approved. An area in question, or where you see the two blue rectangles right there, those were proposed to be two three-story live-work buildings, where you would have retailer office on the floor, on the ground floor, and then residential units above. What is proposed tonight is a new building, three stories in height, for the used storage services retail. So it'd be a self-storage use, similar to the ones we have seen recently on Robin Hood Road and more recently at Hillcrest. One of the things we worked closely with the applicant on was really the design of these buildings. We wanted to make sure that it fit in with the architecture of the shopping center. And so the top image is from within the site, looking at the building there. And you can see they've added some windows and some transparency there, some tower elements to make that work. And the image on the bottom of the screen is really kind of from the almost the residential vantage point, is that building turns the corner. They have done a good job of providing some transparency, some tower elements, and some fenestration there to make that work. So in summary, the area plan, as I told you, does recommend commercial for the site. This is a larger building at about 97,000 square feet than what was proposed before. And those western and southern facades include those architectural elements that really help to make this project work, in staff's opinion. It went, this request went to the Planning Board on May the 23rd. No opposition was present, and the Planning Board unanimously recommended approval of this request.
Any questions, Mr. King?
I would just like to comment on the one that I have on Robin Hood. I drive by it a couple of times a week. It's been there for over a year now. I have never seen a car come in and out of it. So if there ever was a low-traffic-generating business, this is it. Having said that, I will move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W-3411.
Second. Motion, second. Any discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. And we go to item Z5.
Item Z5, public hearing on site plan amendment of 177 LLC, for two multi-use buildings in a MUS zoning district. Property is located on the south side of Salem Avenue and west side of South Marshall Street, located in the south ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Again, is there anyone in council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? The petitioner is here for questions. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Recognize, Councilmember Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could we have a brief briefing from the staff, Mr. King?
All right. Start with the location map of the subject property outlined in yellow. This is located within Southeast Gateway Development, just south of Old Salem. Many of you are familiar with this. It's been a project that's been long in the making. You can see there the Y property to the south, Salem Creek, the existing mixed-use building there on the corner. And you may remember more recently, we had a site plan amendment request for a four-story, 32-unit building just to the east of this site. This is the area plan, which recommends mixed use for the subject property. And a few images on site, this is along sort of the South Marshall Street extension. The subject property would be to the right in this image. The fencing that you see there on the left is actually the construction fencing for the property that you saw, that amendment that you saw recently. In this image, subject property would be to the left. It would be back over the vehicle that you see there. In the background of this image is the Navant facility that's located there along Salem Avenue. And this is kind of from the same vantage point, looking at one of the very first mixed-use buildings that was built within Southeast Gateway. This would be at the corner of Main and Salem. This is the existing approved site plan. To get you oriented, Salem Avenue is to the top of this image. The Marshall Street Extension is coming kind of along in this area right here. The site plan amendment that I mentioned earlier is kind of the little shape over here that's kind of in this yellowish color. And then Salem Creek is toward the bottom of this image. What was shown on this plan were basically two buildings that were kind of a Z-shaped. This southernmost building was a four-story building that had a mixture of uses in it. It did, I'll call attention to the fact that circulation, as it wraps around the southern edge of this building, you had kind of parking and drive areas there, close to the greenway, and then a connection back over to the west. What's proposed tonight is a site plan amendment, really for that southern area. It's a five-story building with parking and retail located on the bottom floor of that, with four stories of residential units located above, for a total of 40 units. As I noted, that changed as you come along South Marshall Street. What this plan does is it actually celebrates the greenway. It puts an outdoor element there, close to the greenway, which in staff's mind is better than having those parking spaces along the greenway. It does provide that east-west connection to serve the remainder of the Gateway property. And these are the elevations that were submitted with the request. So the top elevation, this would be as if you were coming down along the Marshall Street Extension. The greenway would basically be over on the left-hand side of that image. That's kind of the outdoor area that I referenced earlier. This bottom image is if you were coming on South Marshall Street. This would be sort of the first appearance of the building you would see with the retail space located on that bottom floor. So in summary, this would basically request, it would replace the four-story building that was previously approved with a five-story mixed-use building. It adds multifamily and area where we would like to see that, where we have services and amenities nearby that can be served with transit and sidewalks. And the building materials and design of those buildings complement the existing structures within the Gateway. And this, again, represents a long-term collaborative redevelopment between all the various public and private entities that have gone into the Gateway over the years. This request did go to the Planning Board at their May 23 meeting. We had one speaker in opposition, and that speaker noted concerns about traffic in general in the area, and specifically at the intersection of Broad Street and Salem Avenue. Planning Board did hear that. They did vote unanimously to recommend approval of this request.
Any questions, Mr. King? Thank you, Councilmember Larson.
Thank you, Mr. King. This is part of the plan that was developed way back in 1991, called the Southeast Gateway Plan. And we've had a long time working toward getting this populated. We now have the potential of putting condominiums here on this site, which will now be homeowners or owners and staked into the area, providing the population needed to support the retail that we are going to see on the first floor. This is a major step forward for the Southeast Gateway Plan, and we're very pleased to see it. And as a result, I would move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W-3412.
Second.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Councilmember Larson. Item Z6.
Item Z6, public hearing on site plan amendment of Jack Ventures LLC, for a residential building, multifamily use, in a REM8S zoning district. Property is located on the west side of Oliver's Crossing Drive, west of Peters Creek Parkway, located in the south ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
We will have a public hearing on this. For the proponents, Dustin Mills, if you would please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Dustin Mills, 2217 Stanton'sburg Road, Greenville, North Carolina. We are the property owner and the applicant. And I'm going to switch over to a PowerPoint, if you don't mind. Okay. I'm going to bring the efficiency of this meeting to a grinding halt. I apologize in advance. But we started this process back in January and had some initial opposition. So I would like to take just a few minutes to talk about how we got to tonight, if that's okay. To orient you to the location of this site, we're along Peters Creek Parkway, about six and a half miles from downtown Winston-Salem. That gives you kind of a proximity to 40. The site, if you look at it in this rendering, we think it's critically important to see it from this perspective. It is a textbook, in our opinion, example of a perfect multifamily site. And what I mean by that is, on the right-hand side of the screen, you can see single-family transitioning into multifamily in the townhomes and our site, and then within walking distance to a Lowe's-anchored food shopping center that has restaurants, retail. And even better, we always hear about traffic, and we'll talk a little bit about that tonight. But we're at a stoplight intersection on Peters Creek Parkway, and you'll see that Peters Creek is presently under capacity, operating under capacity, from a positive standpoint. The site itself, again, just showing the Lowe's logo so you can orient it, but it's three residential buildings and one leasing office that will house both a management office, a maintenance facility, a resident activity center, and a workout facility. Give you a quick overview of the developments. About a $12 million development, 137,000 per unit, 88 total units. We're going to have full-time, onsite property management, assistant management, and maintenance. Clubhouse, as I mentioned earlier. We've got stringent residency requirements for our residents with income verification, credit history, rental history. And I think it's worth noting, because this is an item that came up pretty regularly in our meetings with the neighbors. It's a privately-owned development, and you'll see why that matters here shortly. We think that our path to approval, and it looks like some of the, or at least maybe that's on the screen, but it's, this is consistent with all the relevant plans, and it doesn't negatively impact the public's interest. We meet all municipal requirements for approval. We are consistent with the Legacy 2030 Plan. We're consistent with the South Suburban Area Plan. We're located in an activity center, which we think is probably the best thing for this site, because our residents can walk to grocery, for example. They don't have to get into their car to do that. And we'll talk about some ways we can get them there safely. Staff recommends approval. Their own report said this is a good site for multifamily. We worked closely with the neighborhood. I'm going to talk about that briefly in the next slide. But there were some, there was some negative, there was some opposition early on. We worked hard for about four and a half months to try to address those concerns. It addresses a significant need in Winston-Salem for workforce housing. This is geared towards working-class individuals. And we got unanimous approval through planning and zoning, or a planning commission. And first time in my career, we were actually complimented in a public forum for our work with the neighbors. So we were happy that they were willing to do that. We're here tonight looking at a site plan amendment, so we're really focusing on technical stuff. I'm really just going to hit the high notes. It meets and exceeds the buffers that are required from a stream that goes through the property. We're using a really expensive subsurface stormwater plan that allows us to minimize the amount of trees that would have to come down. If I'm jumping ahead, we're only using about 45% of the entire developable site. The rest will be non, you know, will not be disturbed. One of the questions or concerns about stormwater, there will be no net increase as a result of that stormwater system. That's been shown in our plans that have been provided. And because of the proximity to single-family residential, we wanted to provide a pretty sizable buffer around the perimeter of the property, and we were able to achieve that. And in addition to that perimeter, the closest that we are to multifamily is also buffered by the HOA open space that is owned by the single-family neighborhood that's immediately adjacent to us. So we're about 350 to 400 feet away from the closest residential property, and that's consistent with what the townhomes that exist are there in place. As I said, we had our first neighborhood meeting back in January. We had about 29 people show up. It was clear to me from that meeting that we needed to take a little more time to work with the residents and address their questions, which you can see, I won't read them, but some of the main things were what and who will live here, is this public housing. We got that, we got that pretty early on in the meeting. And so we requested time to address those concerns. And so we did a lot of community outreach. We eventually held a second neighborhood meeting. That happened on April the 17th. We were happy to see, and I think it's worth noting, I thought it was important to include the letter that we sent out. The box that is red are the five bullets that we thought were the biggest takeaways, that we thought we wanted to address in a letter to residents, so that if they weren't able to attend the meeting, they at least had the answers to the question that were most common. The first one was, is this public housing? It's not. We went through all of those. I won't read those, you know, individually. But five residents showed up. Councilman Larson was kind enough to join us that evening. And I feel that we, I think it's fair to represent that we had a very productive meeting with residents that night. We worked with Councilman Larson, staff, and the residents to come up with a four-way stop that we'll talk about. And in addition, there were three residents that weren't able to be there that night. And I personally met with them in a home of one of the residents and have continued the dialogue with them since then. It's worth taking a look at what we are proposing. Here's an elevation of the building. This is critically important, because I want the record to state what I referenced earlier. We worked with Councilman Larson to get staff's kind of buy-in and the residents, most residents seem to think it was a good idea. This four-way stop that you can see in the red box, that's a, where you see the yellow curve, that's a pretty sharp curve. And there's a decent amount of traffic that goes around, not a ton, but, you know, it's an active area. And so we thought that it was critically important to add a four-way stop there. And so what that does is will reduce the speed at which the cars are traveling around the corner. And if you see the four dots that are outlined in red, those are poles. That's reflected in our plan, but I wanted to state for the record that we have committed to doing that. One of the other things that we worked with the neighbors was to voluntarily agree to providing some additional fencing. The areas in red show those areas of fencing. We had a meeting with a neighbor at the previous planning commission meeting, and we added some to that. So that's reflected in this plan, as is the plan that was submitted by, to staff. When you talk about workforce housing, the residents wanted to know who, what's the income demographic? About $39,000 a year is the income demographic. I think it's important to know that 63.4% of the mean and median of Winston-Salem's working-class households meets that criteria. And I think it's even more important that 30.2% of households in this market pay more than 50% of their rent. That's a major, major concern. That's almost catastrophic. This is the development that we own, that we developed in Wake County in North Raleigh. And I think it's important to show kind of the level of quality of what we're developing. This is the exact same design that what we're proposing here. You can see workout facilities, building facades, playgrounds. We voluntarily, staff did not require a traffic impact analysis, so we hired Raimi Kemp to address, just to see kind of what, you know, we heard the residents. We wanted to make sure that we, we always hear traffic's an issue. But, so we voluntarily engaged Raimi Kemp. Mr. Kemp's actually here tonight, if there are any questions that come up. But I think it's important to point out, Peters Creek Parkway is a stoplight intersection. That's a safety plus, from our standpoint. It's under capacity by almost 11,000 vehicles. They found, and they did an actual traffic count, but the nominal impact of our development is one car, basically every two minutes in the AM peak, and one car every one and a half minutes in the PM peak. We talked about the four-way stop. And the fact that the site is as walkable as it is, we think is almost one of the biggest safety factors. The thing that I didn't mention in the four-way stop that we worked with is that not only is it the four-way stop, but there are pedestrian crosswalks to allow our residents, residents of the single-family, and residents of the townhomes to safely access the sidewalk that takes it from our property all the way up to the grocery, the grocery store. There were questions about how does this impact my property values. We provided two examples. We also have Kimley Horn here, who provided an impact study on our behalf that can have any, address any additional concerns. But the North Carolina Housing Finance on a state level has this report that says no evidence that developments like this have an impact. And truly, you can show that there's no correlation between an impact on value. The best, I think, anecdotal information, evidence that we can give is our development in Wakefield Commons, North Raleigh. Not only is our development located in Wakefield Commons, which is a master plan, large-scale community, but there are three other developments financed exactly like this. And if you see in red, the property values in that particular area, the yellow stars are where they're located, right in the middle of the neighborhood. And property values, you know, over the next, over the last 12 months have increased by 6.1%. So in conclusion, we worked closely with staff to meet all the technical requirements. Staff recommends approval in their report. Planning Commission unanimously approved the vote and commended us for our neighborhood engagement. It is consistent with Legacy 30, the South Suburban Area Plan. It's walkable. It's very tough to find multifamily opportunities that you can walk to a grocery store. Traffic and safety pedestrian measures with the four-way stop are slowing down traffic. We think that's an improvement. We're providing pedestrian access points, and we're providing lighting to address security. And the TIA shows no significant impact to the development. And we've got, there's no statistical correlation for impact, a negative impact on property values. So with that, we've got all of our professionals that helped us over the last four months with the neighborhood here available for questions, as am I. And I'll answer any questions or cede my time to the rest of the presentation.
Okay, you've got about two minutes left. There anyone else you want for your side at this point? You'll have rebuttal time at the end.
No, sir. I think I'm good.
All right, we're good. All right, well, we'll turn it into the opposition. Andreana Kim, sorry, I can't read the last name. Andre Towers, 1636 Harvisher Park. Nope. All right, well, thank you. There's nothing to rebut, but you're welcome to have your three minutes if you'd like. All right, very good. And obviously, the opposition would have three minutes, but there's no one here that I see in opposition to this. So that being said, I'll close the public hearing and ask for the report from the planning board, please.
All right. A lot of this information was covered, but I'll hit some of this again. This is the aerial image showing the subject property outlined in yellow. It's currently zoned RMAS, that's residential multifamily, up to eight units per acre. It is on the west side of Peters Creek Parkway. It was part of the Oliver's Crossing development that was approved several years ago. It's currently vacant. As mentioned earlier, the Oliver's Crossing development contains a mixture of single-family attached units and a neighborhood-scale shopping center. This is an image from the South Suburban Area Plan update, which does recommend low-density attached units for the subject property. And a few images on site. This was taken back in the winter. This was on Oliver's Crossing Drive, looking into the subject property. This is looking at some of the townhouses that are in Oliver's Crossing. So the four-way stop that was referenced earlier by the adder. So the, the four-way stop that was referenced earlier by the applicant would basically be at this intersection. If you were standing here, the, the new access point would come out and line up at this, at this intersection, to give you some reference. This is the Oliver's Crossing Shopping Center, which is adjacent to the site. This is the existing approved site plan. It was approved by the county originally, and you can see the subject property outlined in green there. As shown in this site plan, there was no development proposed on this site plan. And what is before you tonight, as you've seen, is a eighty-eight unit multifamily development consisting of three buildings. Those two larger buildings on the northern side are three-story buildings, two-story building, that's a smaller one there. One access point that would come out and line up with the townhomes at a four-way stop, as mentioned before, in this area. Clubhouse located towards the entrance, a stream that traverses the site, buffers and retaining walls and fencing along that western edge, and then wrapping around the northern edge. That's an addition that was made at the planning board meeting to satisfy concerns of the neighbors in the area. Elevations, as you saw by the applicant, that would be required in this request. In summary, so this is consistent with the approved land uses and density of the initial resoning case. It's a good location for multifamily, because it is walkable to grocery store and services within the area, and the density is compatible with the adjacent townhouses that you saw in the image earlier, at about eight units per acre. This did go to the planning board at their May twenty-third meeting, and we had two speakers in opposition, and they noted concerns about traffic in the area and site distance at that intersection that I showed you earlier. The planning board did hear that, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. King. Counselmember Tepio.
Could you show on the diagram how the persons, the residents would be walking to those? Sure. And are the sidewalks already in?
Sure. So let me find a good image to do that from. Okay, so if you can follow along and see that, the mouse there, where that S is, that's where the, the new driveway would come in and line up. And so there would be sidewalk that would be installed along this western side of Oliver's Crossing Drive, and that would get you over to this back entrance to the shopping center, and that's the back entrance for service deliveries. That fills in the sidewalk gap. There's already sidewalk on the ground that basically gets you from there to the, to the main entrance. So this, they would fill in the gap to get you to that main entrance.
Ms. Marbessi?
Yes, I was just trying to identify on the site plan where the designated tree save area is.
Counselmember Marbessi, if I'm not mistaken, it's basically everything that's kind of this, this leg that extends southward through here. There's no development, no grading at all proposed in this area, and I suspect that's where that, that tree save area is.
Up on the far right-hand corner of that is where it says tree save. I just couldn't tell how far it extended.
Yeah, that this, I mean, you can see from the, from the aerial image, I mean, essentially the grading is stopping somewhere in here. Everything that extends southward there is going to remain in vegetation. There's no grading that would take place in there.
Good, thank you.
Right. Thank you, Mr. King. I recognize Counselwoman Larson for a motion.
Could we go back to the site plan, please? I think probably be useful and understand a few things. Sometimes a delay is worthwhile, and this, this project was delayed three times basically before it went in front of planning board and to finally get a unanimous approval. And I think the time was incredibly well-spent, talking to the neighbors, working through a variety of things. Things like the sidewalk was added, lighting on the sidewalk, concerned about traffic flow in that curve was addressed with the, with the stop signs, privacy fencing and screening fencing went up. A great deal of trees are being saved, actually with the creek basin going through there. When you're on Oliver's Trace Road Drive there, you probably will not even see this development because of the forestry that's going to be between that drive and going up the hill into this unit. So I would like to compliment the developer for their work and working with the community. This is the kind of housing diversity and variety that the city needs. Eighty-eight units, workforce housing, and it's well-placed, convenient to the shopping center. I'm sure the shopping center will appreciate having this new constituency to help support their operation down there. And it's well, well-designed, beautiful buildings, safe, going to be well-maintained, owner-operated, it's not going to be transferred over to some other company, and I'm very confident that they will sustain this, sustain this well through time. So as such, I move approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of the item, and, two, of W. thirty-three ninety-seven.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Okay, now we vote. And that's unanimous. Thank you, Counselwoman Larson. All right, item Z. seven?
Item Z. seven, resolution awarding a contract for resurfacing city streets to APAC Atlantic Incorporated Thompson Arthur Division. This item received a motion of no consideration at the May twenty-eighth, twenty-nineteen city council meeting.
Thank you. I recognize Counselwoman Clark, the Governor of the Finance Committee. If she's ready for a motion.
Yes, this was approved unanimously at finance, and I'll make a motion for approval tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. This did have no consideration motion, so we don't discuss those unless the council votes to. We can certainly do that. Anyone want to make a motion to open discussion?
I move that we open discussion.
All right, is there a second?
Item Z. seven.
Second. Okay, all those in favor of opening up for discussion, please indicate by, I guess, a show of hands. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, we'll, we'll open discussion. All right, Counselmember Adams, I assume you want to have a discussion?
Yes, I do. Again, this was never meant, Mayor and members of the council to cause any issues. This was about the way we do business as a city for our citizens, whether they're minorities or majorities. I'm going to ask Mr. Raleigh to comment about, through my deep dive, what I found out and came to know as of the past couple of days.
Mr. Raleigh, would you comment on your memo that you sent us off?
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protim Burke, and the members of city councils.
Good evening.
So I did provide you all with a memo last Friday that responded to some of the concerns that were expressed by members of this council, as well as community members related to the award of this particular contract. The memo also included some supplemental, quite a bit of supplemental information on the legal framework for the operation of MWBE programs in North Carolina, the successes of our specific MWBE program, some program enhancements. I won't go through all of the supplemental information, but I will just briefly review the information that we provided that speaks specifically to how this particular contract was handled. So just to remind you, the street resurfacing bids were originally scheduled to be opened on May first of twenty-nineteen. The date of the bid opening, it was apparent that we only had one bid. We did not, per North Carolina law, we had to re-advertise, the law requires that we receive at least three bids on the initial opening, which we did not receive. So we re-advertised the bid. On the subsequent bid submission deadline of May ninth, we received again only one bid. It was the same general contractor that bid the first time around. And so pursuant to city and state policy, we went ahead and set goals on the project at that particular time. The goals were set, the minority in business, or, excuse me, MWBE goals were set at five and five, five percent M, five percent W for this particular project. The contractor did meet those goals. This contract with APAC Atlantic, Inc., will be for the resurfacing of approximately twenty-three miles of city streets, which is approximately half of those that will be funded by the twenty-eighteen general obligation bond issue. So one of the issues that was raised was by Mr. Gali Hassan, who spoke at the last public comment period, was about why in this particular bid did the city elect to include manhole structure adjustment as part of the base bid of this contract? And essentially, the reason for that was, it was an administrative decision to do so. We have traditionally and in the past not included manhole structure adjustment in base bid for resurfacing contracts. Our practice essentially to date has been to separate street resurfacing from structure adjustment work and bid those separately. But we have, over the years, come to understand that that may not be the most efficient way to get streets resurfaced in a timely fashion. We've received complaints from members of the public, from members of this body, related to delays that having essentially multiple contractors involved in the resurfacing of streets has created. So in an effort to mitigate that, the decision was made to bundle structure adjustment with the street resurfacing for this particular award. So that was done in this particular case. A certified woman-owned firm out of Graham, North Carolina, was chosen to perform on this contract as the subcontractor for manhole adjustment with a low bid of three-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand. We were able to examine the bids that the general contractor received for the project and determine that Mr. Hassan's, the company, Ascend Construction, had bid an amount of four-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand dollars for the work, which is a hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars greater than the lowest bid, which was ultimately selected by the, by the prime contractor. And of course, North Carolina law does make very clear that the city does not have the authority to acquire a contractor doing business with it to select a particular contract or some contractor, minority subcontractor, who doesn't submit the lowest responsive and responsible bid. One other thing that I will note is that it is typically our practice to look for opportunities to de-bundle contracts. We do that with a specific intent of trying to create economically feasible units for minority and women-owned businesses to participate. Again, the decision in this particular case was made that we should bundle them again in response to complaints and trying to provide the highest quality service. The other thing I will touch on quickly, it was included in, in the memo as, as an attachment, is just a review of the, the past twenty-two contracts that have been awarded by, resurfacing contracts that have been awarded by the city. We have averaged across those twenty-one completed contracts, six point two percent participation by WBEs, or by MBEs, rather, and five point four eight percent participation by WBEs for those, those, excuse me, for those completed street resurfacing contracts. There's quite a bit of other information contained, but for, for the sake of brevity, I will, in my comments there, respond to any questions that the mayor, Mayor Protim and council may have.
No questions, Mr. Raleigh. Counselmember Adams?
Yes. The thing, members, mayor, members of the council that bewildered me, and I consider an issue, is that the decision to de-bundle, to bundle, was made by, it was an administrative decision. It was not a decision made by the council. History shows that we have previously were able to allow some form of economic equity and opportunity to minorities when pieces of a contract are bitted out. Certain pieces that minorities are able to do the work and know they, they're not prime contractors, they don't have the bonding and all of the money and the equipment, but over the years, we found that we were successful at being able to offer opportunity to minorities. And the thing, too, that people listening need to understand, we talk about minorities, we're not talking about white women or white men. We're talking about black people and brown people, basically. Am I right, Mr. Raleigh?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, what this contract does, and there's nothing we can do right now to stop it, but this is one of those cases for me that I will not be able to vote on. I'm going to abstain from it because I wasn't aware that we had taken this contract. It was not done in any other contracts. This contract, and if it was because council members and citizens put pressure on staff administratively to do something about it, I think that that decision should have come back to this council, especially when you're talking about outing or not allowing minorities to participate in a process that we pride ourselves on, particularly the bonds that we were able to get African-Americans and brown people in our community to support them once they saw in fourteen, that we were going to allow them to be able to reap economic opportunity. This contract was a contract that's not like all the other contracts. I wanted the council and the mayor to be aware of this, that this is something I feel like we need to go back and revisit. That's all I need to say.
Counselwoman Burke?
Yes, since I introduced this MWBE, and we've had, some of us been here a good while, city manager has been here a good while, and he understands and should understand that things like this are too important for a staff to make a decision about. Now, if you don't do things, if you don't make things happen, it will never happen. When we look at this city, we have spent, I don't know how many tax dollars. We've had, where we voted for bonds, we've said to the citizens, we're going to do certain things. Citizens have hope and confidence. But when we look at the underemployment, the unemployment, we look at the conditions of citizens in this city, how they live, live less than human, a lot of them. This is why I can say to you in this city, we have two cities. All you have to do is go down Patterson Avenue and Northwest Boulevard, and Ivy and Northwest Boulevard, and go up a little further toward Patterson, and then go down on Fifth Street in front of the library and see the two cities that we have. These are not all blacks or browns who are suffering in this community. You have many whites who are suffering in this community. And I think, I'm going to say this, all these companies we bring in here, I have been for the companies to come in here. I believe that you should spend money to bring companies to this city to provide opportunities. That's what we have clearly said, opportunities. But when you look at our record, we give ourselves a F, because we have not done that. And I'm saying this as clear as I possibly know how. The sensitivity of all of us sitting on this board, council, ought to be more in tune with the reps, the people we represent. And whatever happened, Mr. City Manager, is something that needs to be evaluated, and these staff people need to step in line and do what they're supposed to do. They don't run this city. You come here to work every day. City managers, this city manager runs this city, through nine of us saying to him what we like and what we dislike. And I think you need to get them back in line, City Manager, if you're going to be the City Manager. You let them know you run this city, and the person that stepped out of line like that before it came to this council, to that particular committee, would that have been something that had gone to the Public Works Committee?
Mr. Adams?
And finance, too.
I believe finance in this case.
Okay, finance. Then Chairman, finance, you need to step it up and understand you're the chairman of this committee.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you, Counselwoman Burke. We do have a motion and second to approve this contract. Do you want to comment?
Just a brief comment. I just wanted to note that I think Counselwoman Adams raised very reasonable questions that, that were pursued and answered thoroughly in this case. I was very pleased to see that the report that came back included the fact that the, the subcontracting goals for both women-owned and minority-owned business representation were met in this, in this case. They were able to provide information regarding why the Hassan family's bid was not taken in this case related to the substantial cost differential involved. And I also have encouraged staff to look for some of the smaller contract opportunities that are sizable for subcontractors, such as the Hassan family's business, that we are currently having difficulty in the public works area getting any bids on, and providing information to them about those opportunities and encouraging them to pursue them.
All right, Counselwoman Larson?
Do I understand correctly that the final minority participation quota that was twenty, I think twenty-two percent African-American participation in this project was from outside of the city, is, that these subcontractors were not, not local? Is this a question of local people working on these projects?
I believe that, Counselwoman Larson, it has been raised as a question.
I believe that, Councilmember Larson, it has been raised as a question. We don't have the ability to restrict who, where those subcontractors submitting bids for a project come from. We don't have that.
So, we met, we met, we met our quota, our goals, as far as participation.
Yes.
But what we're missing here is the ability to support our own people within the city. And then, the only way that we're able to do that is unbundle these projects.
You still can't.
Right. Still can't do that. Just a question about, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Larson, just to clarify, yes. So, we don't have, even if we were to debundle these two pieces, we would still be bidding the structure adjustment portion as a formal contract, meaning?
Open contract.
It's an open contract. So, we don't have the ability to direct to.
Councilwoman Taylor and Councilwoman Burke?
Thank you, Mayor. When I went out to the people of the Southeast Ward and worked with them to support these bonds, one of the things that I told them adamantly was that I would work very diligent to make sure that folks who are local have an opportunity to work on these projects, whether they might be minority or majority populations. And I just, I don't feel like that promise was met today. I wrestle with that versus the need to get a lot of the streets that's in my community paved. There's a lot of complaints about potholes and raised manholes, and I think voting for this would satisfy that concern, but I'm not prepared to do it at the expense of running over people who every single day live, work, and relax in this city, and they're not having the adequate opportunity to work on these projects. So, MWB is important. I think, Councilwoman Bessie, you raised a very valid point. You do, and I always sit and I listen carefully to you. But I think in this case, the women and minority-owned participation was not met from this city. Now, I do know, Mr. Rowley, that we cannot make folks do it, but I think at some point in time, there must be some sort of protests and some sort of voices that come forward to say local people should get priority on local jobs. So, regardless of how I vote today, that's what's at the tip of my tongue and at the top of my mind. Local people should get jobs for local bonds, and I think my vote will reflect that today.
Councilwoman Burke, have another comment?
Yes, I was going to say with us having the educational places in this city and not having people trained. We have the Forsite Community College. I said a few years ago with them to talk about getting people trained to do jobs, and we're doing a very poor job in this city to have Salem College, Winston-Salem State, Wake Forest University, Forsite Tech, and still not able to have trained people. And some people may feel good about this, but it's a shame. You ought to hold your heads down and say as many years as we have had the MWBE, that in this city, we cannot go directly to our own citizens who have paid taxes, been major parts of this community, and they can't even pay their bills now and living less than humans ought to live. I hope that this city and the folks who work for this city understands how to understand clearly when comments are being made, they're just not made to the air. They're made to people with sensible minds and understanding minds, Mr. City Manager.
All right, we do have a motion and second. All those in favor of the motion to approve this contract, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Okay, we have one, two, three, four, five yeses. The motion passes with five votes. Thank you very much. All right, that's the end of our agenda for tonight. Any comments from our councilmembers? Councilwoman Clark?
Just real quickly, thank everybody for showing up for our public meeting last Thursday, and this coming Thursday at 4:00, I believe, Mr. Rowley, is that correct? We will have another special committee of the Finance Committee on the budget. That's 4:00 this Thursday.
Wonderful. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second. Second adjourn. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. We adjourn.